You guys are so funny. Just need to add people.
I've got six thirty, unofficial start. This is June sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting of City of Mount Vernon. And we began with asking the call to you were to see if there are any agenda changes or items you want to add. Otherwise, we'll take an approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Scott.
A second.
Take it down. So that approval of the agenda, all of your that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vows, motion carries. Uh, I have to see communications. Anybody here speak to the castle lot? Any items? Yes. You're at the top.
This won't take long. Uh, I just want everybody to be aware that on Tuesday of next week, um, Park Record Board, the common Park Record Board is holding a public input forum at our regular meeting for, um, input towards the park land that is in the Stonebrook neighborhood. We felt we'd have, uh, uh, an invite opportunity for those individuals. Anybody in the city, we invited the entire city, but we didn't send out letters to the entire city. We did send out letters that were within five hundred feet of that park. So, um, just so you're aware, it's Tuesday, seven P. M., or excuse me, six P. M. to seven P. M. At the Lethberg Center. It's the, um, regular Park Record Board meeting.
Is there a particular green space like behind that Myers House?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, existing green spaces don't need to us by the stone.
Great. Anybody else here speak? Any item?
Matt, that was the fourteen.
Fourteen, that's right. It's usually fourteen.
Think we're off to the consent agenda. I believe we have four items on that consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull off or we're ready to move that?
I will need to go through the consent agenda.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Sack?
I'll say it how it is.
Thanks, Scott. Report on consent agenda, all of your motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vows, motion carries. Uh, we've got no kind of public hearings, ordinance approvals, resolutions, are we originally addressed resolutions? Got two items for us versus, um, proving the City of Mount Vernon budget transfers for fiscal year end, year one, twenty-one, two. Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
No, this is the, the final resolution. Um, as I stated in my report, uh, part of it is for tip, part of it is for what we call pilot. It's a payment with taxes, so we can charter enterprise funds, money to send back to the general fund, transfer money back. And then, like I said, I know that the LBC is the most valuable, that must be just sixty-five thousand. Far cry from where we were last year for loss, we were close to two hundred thousand. So I think everything's kind of coming in the right direction and ready to close out this fiscal year and start it on next.
Any questions, Chris, with regard to that first resolution, much transfers with budget?
All of approval of resolution six dash twenty twenty-two A, approving the City of Mount Vernon budget transfers for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Take it down, Mr. Sack. Second, take it forward.
Quick question, I apologize. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Uh, down the right, so we've got the front and the two, and then down the right hand side, as an example, there's seventeen thousand change for LMI. So that goes into the general fund, but it's dedicated to LMI or?
So we account for the, um, specific item because, yes, it has to go to LMI.
We've got percentages built into some things, let's say X has to go, right?
Correct. It's like thirty-three point something percent of each of those payments.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure it's written.
Let's move a second to approve resolution six dash six dash twenty-two A. And if we are ready to vote on that, are there any other questions? Sue, definitely.
Tarrman?
Yes.
Tarrman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bingo.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll be on a second resolution, setting salaries for appointed officers, employees of the City of Mount Vernon, this will be year twenty-two, twenty-two, three.
Uh, this is an annual resolution that we do for all, what I consider all annual employees. Normally, I don't wait until a month of June to do this, however, later in the agenda, um, I kind of keep everything together. So with the exception of Chief Shannon, everything recollects a five percent increase. For those that are here, when we provide those, then Chief Shannon's given a larger raise over the two-year period.
We see the schedule, we're leading it out of current year and what's the fact of the beginning July first. Uh, any questions, Chris, about post details? Here again, this is our motion to.
I move approval of resolution six dash six dash twenty-two B. Resolutions setting salaries for the appointed officers and employees of the City of Mount Vernon for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two.
A second.
Take it forward, Stephanie. If there are no further questions, we're ready to vote on that. Are you ready to call, call Sue?
I have left maybe correction that needs to be.
Yeah, I could talk about twenty-two, I.
Okay.
I made it.
The call.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Can you affect it in July one?
Yeah.
Catch on.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Did you catch that, that Sue for the minutes?
Yes. Oh, yeah, that's good. Good catch, Tim.
I was just. All of a sudden, we're ready to watch a chat.
Do you have a resolution that we're ready to vote on, I think?
Bingo.
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Tarrman?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Tarrman?
Yes.
Thank you, then. Resolution carries. Um, in all business, we have an item off table. I don't know, are we ready to talk about that today? If you get it off the table.
Then we would need a removal from the table.
Thank you, Scott. This is our second. And, uh, on table, this is the resolution. We need one of that, that, all of your that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Um, Mr. Sack, should I give you, give us a thing about what we're doing? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I gave you some late information in the last meeting, so this will give you some time to figure this out and read through it. But, um, for many years, Dave has Parker been trying to do some slows, modular upgrades. We've done that to dugouts, we've done that with the outfield warning track, um, gender replacement, the batting cage. But now it's time to really start talking about the building itself, the lights, um, and some other opportunities. And so, um, I know we had it in the C I P for a couple of years and it's kind of been pushed back. There's certain reasons for that and get that. Um, so just what I had asked B and K to do is to come up with a, um, more solid future plan for that park. It is probably the most requested park of all our parks that we have in regards to ball fields. Well, because it has the future space, it has, it had adequate lighting in the past. Uh, it's a single field, uh, it's located near the pool, has a playground, um, a lot of reasons. It has ambiance, a lot of reasons. Um, so, you know, we try to put as much, well, I shouldn't say try to put as much. We try to, uh, try to improve as much as we can with monies available. And we were handcuffed many years when I started here, eleven years ago, we were handcuffed because we didn't have a source to utilize funds for. And now we do franchise fee. Uh, so we're just taking a look at what this park could look like. And this is, uh, there's, there's really no, could better invest, this was the best we put out there. There are obviously things that we can do at a lesser degree to improve that park slowly. But I wanted to put in here minds what this ballpark would look like for full extension of, um, beautification improvements and so forth. The one piece that is thrown a little bit more mentioned this is the location of the actual existing building. The existing building is located within, uh, the right way and also doesn't need, um, setbacks.
And you're talking about the concession stand?
The concession stand, I understand. And I don't know, I wasn't here, I'm excited, I was here eleven years ago, I remember what it looked like before, but I hope Cornell puts money in the field because it was their collegiate softball field. I'm pretty sure they probably had something to do with contributing dollars to making it a two-level concession stand slash press box.
No.
No.
Nope, okay, so we did that this week?
That was, yeah, that was like that when I was here in the eighties.
Okay, I was in there. Okay, it's always been like that, right? Always the press box, huh?
The, yes. The changes to the dining at Cornell, one of them was bringing the fence in. The outfield end regulation, because it used to have a very deep outfield for the long ball dinners.
Just worse.
And then softball.
Then it happened.
They also, uh, modified, modified the side fences to meet the collegiate requirement for, uh, dimensions.
Dimensions, sure.
Yes. So those, those were major improvements and I believe we did some improvements to the lighting that lights at that time as well. But that, even when Cornell was playing there, they weren't really using the press box. I believe they used the table in front.
Near the fence.
Yeah.
Part of the concession stand, sure, okay. Well, I hope to tell you that that press box has been used for probably fifteen years at least. Um, it's pretty douchey up there. But the building is a long park, um, it's a block building, um, there's some issues with that. The restrooms are early, are paid. Um, we finally upgraded, we upgraded the lights to be, uh, uh, motion activated, so they will turn on and turn off. Now, it used to stay on and on like, I would get a call from one of our neighbors, Mr. Root, and he would call me and say, hey, the lights are on again. So I'd drive over there and have to turn them off. Um, so we've done some things there, but it's time to talk about the future of this park, I think it might come in. So, so that's what's interesting today. Um, as a placeholder, Chris and I just targeted fifty thousand dollars. We knew we couldn't do everything for fifty thousand dollars back, uh, was it five years ago, four years ago, on the C I P? And so obviously, uh, we got a little more in-depth into what we're going to do in that park, but the fifty-five, fifty thousand dollar placeholder has moved a bit as far as to that. So, um, well, we're going to go from here. Uh, I guess I'm just looking for you all to have some input involved with this. I know we don't have any dollars to allocate, but it's, uh, so.
Prioritize forming lighting concession stand.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
What are your top three priorities?
Yeah, number one priority is, um, is wanting to be the, um, lighting. Um, although I'm not sure how long that building's going to last, but the lighting right now is inadequate for anybody to play on it. So we have no opportunity past, past dark to have anybody play inside that park. And that's, kids will look forward to that. Teams look forward to that. Um, so that's, that's probably my one, number one priority. Number two would be obviously the restroom facility.
It's also. It's the safety issue as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Paul. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If you, if you do not have adequate lighting, when it comes to safety issue, you cannot play on it. And that's what we told teams right now. We have the lights locked up, nobody can access those lights right now. Um, they did, they heard the spring, they tried to, um, it, it just doesn't work. So nobody's requested to rent the lights, nobody's requested either light because they're locked up, so nobody can use that. So from, yeah, that standpoint, the lighting is, one, it's an ambiance, it's a, it's a pretty feeling, but also it's a safety thing. So we have to upgrade that lighting. Years ago, Nick, Ness and I were given lighting, there was two options. One was the halogen bulbs that exist right now on the poles, which we could not get. Uh, we had to change out and get a different style, so that's an option. Where number two is LED. And I don't know the exact electricity bill that we can incur there, but I know it's expensive. And I don't think we'd be charged enough to recuperate any more cost, um, for those current lighting bulbs that are there, current fixtures. So, um, so we thought, we felt that would be the way to go for the future for that park. Uh, surely we could look at a, a lesser expensive option and, and review that. Um, the poles themselves, back five years ago, a lighting offered to give us, donate some poles. So I think that is back again in the final dollar amount.
There's installation.
Might be installation, but not actually purchase.
Right, we, we still have to purchase whatever they handed us or install whatever they handed us.
Yeah, they offered to give us the poles, not install.
Right.
The reason why there's some yellow in there, I'll move back if I ever reason this a second. The reason why there's some yellow on the budget there is B and K is still looking at, um, giving some final pricing on actual lighting fixtures themselves, um, through Musco and also Hubble. Uh, I think I said it right. So Dave is still trying to come up with some finalization of some quotes for those structures. Uh, probably one is lighting, third is two is the restroom. I'm not too concerned about a concession stand, that is not used that often, but having a restroom option is the way to go for sure. Um, concession stand can be a minimal amount of space within that building and it's just common in that type of setting. When people do tournaments, they'd like to use the concession stand.
What do we do, what do we do currently for, um, bathroom facilities there?
At Davis? There's two bathrooms.
We use the current bathroom?
We use the current structure, yes. Uh, fixtures are outdated, uh, I mean, there is an issue, there is an issue, the floor is an issue.
We'll say.
No, it's just gross.
It, it's just gross, it doesn't smell very good. I think the idea of trying to reduce the smell does not work.
It works, but it's not, uh, to my deal.
Yeah, several priorities, David, just one and two, considering can do where are ninety percent of the cost and okay. Yeah. What we're, I think what we're searching for, Sue. I've challenged Matt, Hope of Works, um, for us and my staff to elevate our park spaces from what I would consider good. They're not great, they're not portable, they're just somewhere in the middle. So the project that you see in front of you would elevate that park to where we feel like it should be. The problem is we only have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in earmark for the project. Now, if the council chose, you could wait, um, to start this project a year from this summer. It's the next fall, um, depending on how that has been used for it. So that's the other part about Davis Park, that it's very specific timeframe to when it's needed, so we have to kind of stage, um, when we've been process, project, when we've been it up. But theoretically, we could be ready to do the entire project a year from now until next fiscal year. Trying to get it to wrap into, uh, even the following, so trying to split it over into fiscal year period. The only thing that I would say to that is that it will take most of your annual allocation from franchise fees for like the next year and a half. So those that we have in budget right now are going to go into places, bridge or repair, but it will hurt and then. We don't have anything specifically targeting those funds at that point, but, um, it will be quite a share of those funds if you.
Excuse my ignorance, I don't know what franchise fees are.
So we're trying to make a long story, really, so I'll show you. But when I walk through the door, the sales tax funds for, uh, infrastructure have been tied up and are tied up until twenty-three. So outside of the Marlin or bond agent, you can tax, basically tax dollars to cover those expenses. The only other option we had were franchise fees. Basically, it's what Alliance collects for us, basically, they bill up to five percent. So the city can pass a franchise fee of up to five percent for the use of its right away for those purposes. We initiated a program to stare stuff up to five percent and move over a year period, or two-year period. So we collect roughly, um, sixty thousand imported, we were taking. And Alliance, when they first told us, we, we thought we were going to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, only max out at five percent.
It's two-fourty.
Now it's two-fourty, so.
No, they, they for two-thirds of this project.
Correct. And, and what we have attempted to do is not leverage that annual money towards the bond payment that's going to now take those funds until twenty-twenty-two or twenty-thirty-two. So we use this as kind of our capital funds. Now, there are limitations to what we can use it for, the parks and one, existing public buildings and other streets. All of the things that we really need a capital products fund for, so we could use those, um, but we just could. If we want to move forward with the entire project and not try to piece this thing together, even though it's in this year's C I P year, we know that we, essentially until next year's, our next C I P. So we'd be pushing this project off to the summer of twenty-three at the earliest.
To do it all?
To do it.
Okay, move, okay.
So if we did it in phases and we, and we chose to do the lights now, exactly which line ends on here? So what would be used for, for that extra?
So there's.
Is it eleven, well, thirteen, fourteen, or is it not eleven because it's in fourteen?
Essentially, what they're telling us is it would be roughly, we could do the lighting portion of it for less than a hundred and fifty. So there's budgets in each one of these phases, the mobilization, all of that. The only issue that I have with doing a split project like this is that you're going to pay mobilization twice. You're probably going to lose some of those funds. Now, he only has twenty thousand in there. So it's not a huge dollar amount. The concession building itself is a large chunk of this cross, it's a hundred and fifty grand. But he's telling us between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and thirty, they did lights.
I, I hear what you're saying about the mobilization and paying it twice. However, I do see a benefit in doing something now because that shows to our kids and families and community that there's a commitment there.
True.
To invest in it.
And I don't have, I, I don't want to, I want to promise, I don't have a profit for doing this, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that options.
Yeah.
And should we be looking at the four sixteen or the three twenty?
You would be, I mean, so there's fifty percent contingency in there, we would be, we budget for the four sixteen. The expectation is on bid day that it'll be around three hundred and twenty thousand. The contingency, obviously, is for any changes that would happen after that.
So from a, so just if we were to kind of, if we were to do the lights now, and I know I'm going to ask some questions that, you know, we don't know a hundred percent of the timing of, but. If theoretically, we could get the lights done this season and we said, okay, next season with fiscal year rolling, we're going to do the concession stand and the bulk of that. While that's happening, could the players, could the field still be used?
I think during the lighting process, they could.
But when the concession stand is going?
No, because the concession stand will be moved to where the existing stands are. And I think from a safety perspective, you can't have kids.
So I have a question about. Could we do a variance to keep the building framework where it's at?
No. So there, there's, the variance could reduce the amount of setbacks, but the Board of Justice doesn't have the authority to allow a building to be built within the right way. And this is not the only building that is in, in the right way. So if we were to do this specifically for the city, that open up potentially, uh, from legal service. Some of the private buildings that we do, that we do not want to allow to continue beyond their usual life. So I think to be fair to not only the citizens of Mount Vernon, but to everything that's real, that needs to, to move. And, and it's the location of the sewer. So if we have to do it at all, um, it makes sense to move it in a spot that would be more feasible because you're not going to be able to take advantage of the existing receptacles by moving if you have to do the building.
Does it make sense, so thinking about the concession area and the bathrooms that go with it, does it make sense to put that off also to have it be part of the larger evaluation of what will be removed with the pool? I mean, if, if we chose to leave the pool there, we chose to do a new pool structure, would it be possible to do something conjoining those facilities, especially the bathrooms? Just a thought.
Yeah.
Good thought.
So theoretically, yes. I mean, if, if the pool structure had to move, let's just say that, please don't take this. If we moved the, the pool structure to somewhere else in Davis and let's just say that it moves closer to, um, the field structure. You could sidewalk to a joint restroom facility that had an exterior. Yes. So it's possible, yeah. And we would, if we want to tackle lighting now, which, and, and talking to Matt, he would prefer to at least get the lighting moving forward so people can, can't see that we're, um, doing something over there. We should have an answer by the time we would have to take this out for a bid as far as what our options would be. But like I said, here's the entire package. Our recommendation is to do forward with the lights still this year because we had this on earmark. And then the concession and moving the, the stands and, and doing some of the veteran portions of the project that then occur as a separate bid in the fall of this year.
And would you anticipate that portion of it occurring towards fall when we can get through fall season or kind of whenever they can have?
Were you mentioning the lighting?
No, the, the lighting would just happen, I would, I would assume this season, whenever we can.
Yeah.
Here.
You mean as far as the rest of it?
Here's, here's what, I guess, here's what I'm, what I'm really asking and why I kind of wanted to walk down the road of timing with my last set of questions. It, I understand the, um, wanting to show progress and getting things moving and showing people that we're actually doing something out there. But my concern is, we get the lights up towards the end of this season and, you know, we have, uh, three weeks of usable weather or whatever. And then we get into next season and now we shut it all down, kind of we're digging up and. So we just put the lights in to show people we're doing something, we use them for three weeks and now.
What do you do?
You know what I mean? It just, so, and I, I know I'm asking for personal kind of, I get that, but I'm just.
So what we typically do is just do a hard start date. So when we bid the project out, instead of leaving it up to the contractor as to when they would start and when they would finish, we would put hard deadlines and start dates in there. So the same thing that we did with the alley project in the downtown, they had a hard start date of after purge days when all festivals were completed. And then they had to be done by the start of festival season or following year.
So we could say, you know, start date of August fifteenth, once your pad has already occurred, we've got a good chunk of the season and now.
And you want to bid that far enough, you know, if you can bid that, obviously, you're in advance with those hard dates in there. Then they can plan around or contractors can, uh, can figure out their constructions, schedule a little easier. So what we would do is I would just sit down with Matt and say, okay, when are your, um, when is the use drop off and when can we start? And we would pick that as our hard start date and then when you have to have a back, that would be our thing. It's not an overly complex project. Um, it's, it's basically a right. So.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
At that point, like, um, we would make the concession as part of it, it's a dead space and we don't.
Yeah.
Um, so you might as well just incorporate all of that, but. Yeah, that's probably how we would handle that moving forward is just setting our own timeline.
Yeah, when I originally talked to Dave early in the spring about a schedule, if we were to just do the lights, we're going to shut down like June fifteenth and be done by October for the lights. Simple. Uh, to do the entire project, we actually talked last spring about if we were to do something in the summer, start July fifteenth, be done by November thirty, something like that. in the summer, start July 15th, be done by November 30th, something like that. So, it can be done in a three-month period.
Now, are you very still confident with that, given the supply chain issues that we're having right now? I mean, that's our challenge.
Yeah. Easy.
Well, honestly, depending on what I O system we go with. And if we go with a muscle I O system, they're must eat, so.
Yeah.
There isn't a huge supply issue in that area. But for some of the other materials, I'm more concerned about this building than I am that next year.
Yeah.
And the only reason we wouldn't do the light, the whole thing this year is because of the cash flow.
Yeah.
Because you could work all winter and put that thing together. So, it'd be ready for Chris Scott's, you know, question. It'd be ready for fall season.
Yeah, just need to make sure that it's available April 1st.
We would have, so the, what we could do is wrap that into this borrowing that we're going to undertake. It's just a matter of do you want to pay 3% interest or not pay 3% interest if you waited? I mean.
Yeah. So, one more question on the cash flow, and I, again, this is my own experience here. Our fiscal year is July 1 to June 30th. A lot of poor profit companies out there, it's January 1 to December 31st. They just want to get paid in their fiscal year, and if we say, we will pay you for this project in, I'm going to make this up, November 1, March 1, and August 1, they still get their money in their fiscal year, and we split it up into two of our fiscal years. We never do anything like that.
Which is kind of what we were projecting to do if we waited a year.
We did that.
We would have, our cash would come in at the same time because it's a little bit of the same, it's separating a bunch of years for this.
This is kind of trying to find a way to get it all done now.
Our accounts can go negative in that fiscal year, knowing that we're going to get the capital throughout that fiscal year. What the others get really candid about is if it's in a negative when you cross that fiscal year. So, we do the same thing as the contractors do from a timing perspective. We know that we're not going to have to pay the entire amount upfront. But I would, if we were going to do the entire project, say, try and still do it this year, I would probably recommend borrowing 1.3 million versus 1 million. To cover this, because if it goes, if it crosses a fiscal year which our revenue will, I have to account for those dollars somehow.
And what's your borrow rate?
We can borrow internally, we can borrow internally from a fund as well. And you can charge, the city can charge, so there's a lot of different ways to do this. But I think the estimate was somewhere around 2, 3%.
It's relatively important.
Yeah. And as I said, the last week, our borrowing capacity jumped from 14.7 million to 16.7 million, so that helps.
And what's the estimated cost of the product increase year over year? I mean, is it greater than 3%?
Last year, they were telling us it should go down by now. This year, they're saying, yeah, I don't think so. So, yeah, I mean theoretically, if you want, it's just, that borrowing is on our books is the only thing. And all I'm attempting to do right now is to save you as much borrowing capacity when it relates to the pool, but you don't necessarily have a timeline on the pool construction either. So, you could go ahead and borrow 1.3 this year, have a cash flow. And if we don't, like I said, what ends up happening, correct? So, we borrowed 1.3 million and this project, let's just say when it gets bid, comes in at 320,000. We don't have any, you know, any additions to come in. That money that we borrowed can still be used for anything that we put with that resolution, including making a payment with it. So, we're not going to lose anything by doing that. It's just whether or not we'll have that money.
And one year of interest and 3% for another 300,000 would be $9,000. Is that the right math?
Pretty close.
Okay.
I'm guaranteed we'll see more product increase than $9,000.
I have a couple of questions. I've spent a lot of time on ballparks over the years, and this building seems like a premium building. And I understand we want, you know, a nice facility and everything, but for the amount of time that it's used, it looks like overkill to me. And this is somebody who takes pride in that arc, you know, spent a lot of time working at it over the years in various capacities. I don't think I've ever been thrown out of the game. It just, I feel like it's a premium building that may be overkill. So, that's just some feedback, you know, maybe looking at.
Yeah, it's a prefab.
It's a MASON, it's a C M U type structure, but the reason for going the C M U route versus, say, a stick build is maintenance.
That makes sense.
For us to be able to power wash a C M U building with factory floors is so much easier than trying to.
Correct. So, over time.
Correct. I think the cost savings for this over time from a maintenance perspective probably.
That's my concern.
Probably evens itself out. So, a lot of the new restrooms are because, well, just in the last three months, you saw three different parks and three different cities being analyzed by fire forces starting to take rolls and fire inside buildings and it's a manager. So, using a more deposit is just, it's sad that we do it, but that's what we're doing.
And that answers a lot of these questions.
It does also act, it's not 100% foolproof because it's not a storm shelter building per se, but it does give some form of protection against islands versus, say, a stick build.
Okay. So, then my other concern is, is the lack of a back, backdrop for the back stop. So, the fielders and everyone looking, you're looking through the fence out at houses and everything, and I have concerns as a former coach of kids being able to pick up the ball on my drive, you know, pitchers eating the ball because they can't pick it up, whereas currently with that building there, there's that, you know, spot.
So, that's a good point about this building.
Yeah, you just.
Can you use tighter netting?
So, that was one of my questions was, when I saw netting, would that eliminate my concern?
I think on the back portion of it, you could, I'd say there's a couple of ballparks where they'd use a secondary netting on it that actually is smaller. So, in that portion of it's darker.
Yeah.
And then the two-sided are normal.
Yeah. The concept.
I like.
If you're familiar with Perfect Game Field right off Highway 13, that's where this concept has come from, the bottom border, be like a wall.
Great.
Top will be netting.
Okay.
And netting will extend all the way to first baseline instead of having a fence.
Okay.
The issue with fences, so quickly does it curl up, does degrade, you know, people hitting into the fence, it grates in really quickly.
Oh, it's good.
We have an issue with the fence on the bottom starts to curl up and come through the line, so we have to secure it now with boards, two-by-fours. It's happening in all of our fields, it's not just this one.
Going back to alternate, is there a rising of that? Storm can do a lot, it's more expensive than the netting do.
Correct.
So, if you want to visualize what this would look like, you can drive by Avenue 15 and Highway 13, and you'll see what they've done with their fields as far as upgrading them, and they look phenomenal.
Yeah. So, what is the Williams Council on this action, on this item, you say? Do you have a recommendation or just kind of a tag here?
I gotta tell you, I like the idea between getting it done more quickly and depth point of material costs that are an unknown or would be practically guaranteed to be a little increased by more than 3%. I'm leaning towards just not coming out and adding it to the barroom.
My assumption is regardless of that.
Regarding what?
So, if we knock it out and get it all done, then that would eliminate the potential for, that was the only question that I couldn't.
I thought Dad made a good point with that, with the consideration.
It is a good consideration. I just remember when I was a kid and as a young parent, there are enough kids that go there, you need a bathroom, that's within five feet. I mean, you know, they give you four and a half, second floor, and then you have. Well, I appreciate you wanting to combine the two, and I think it's a great idea unless we move the pool to the parking lot, I don't know that, I mean, I think.
Well, and the players in the dugout for that matter, you know, you know you're batting number four, you're, number four, I should have heard, you got time.
Remember.
100% absolutely.
We haven't, I mean, in the, the six years that we've been here, not because we haven't tried, we have not done a, what I would consider a full-scale project like this in any one of ours. And it's the first step, I think, in doing this, so.
Um, question, oh, in terms of two bathrooms, maybe unisex?
That's the way we decide.
Excellent, thank you.
The changing tables are gender-specific, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Unisex, ADA compliant will be the route that we will go.
Because that was always the worst thing is you've got a kid, you know, leaving the dugout to go to the restroom, and there's a line for that line.
Especially when you're only dealing with one ballpark, so like Perfect Game, they have half a dozen deals.
Yeah, they have six now.
So, it gets a little harder to do, I mean, to do a unisex building like that, it's cheaper than doing, but in this instance, it's easier for us than just to do unisex.
Yeah, because each, each bathroom in effect is a single stall, whereas in your larger buildings, even though it's Elliott, the bathrooms have multiple stalls designed for gender-specific, so that makes more sense. And you've got more fields with everything, so. So, what action do you think?
Well, we don't necessarily need any action other than we needed a direction, and I think we've kind of got that. So, what we will do is work with Dave to put the parameters together, and then I will reach out and bring tomorrow and fill it up, change it from 1 to 1.3.
Thanks for.
You'll be voting on this?
Thank you.
Yeah, might as well back it.
At least set it at a different time.
Don't get used to the motion for approval just being a tiny reservation for it, because it's going to get a lot easier here.
But, I mean, I agree with Scott and everyone else here, it comes down to, you know, it's the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. And, you know, if you're going to make a splash, make a splash.
And it's been sitting on the vessel.
Yeah. And frankly, you'll never pay for, you know, we'll never pay in user fees and that thing will be, but it's, it certainly will get used.
It will, it will. And, you know, obviously, we only charge $15 an hour right now for use of that lights. Obviously, we may have to increase that a little bit, and we may have to have a conversation about ballparks in general and how much we charge for use during game days in the future, but recruitment and cost will be a little bit important.
That would be something for someone from Parks and Act to just, do some help.
There's a little team all there, you know, just curdges and getting rid of those bleachers. There's been there since I was a kid.
Yeah, I may tell you a story, all right? This is, this is weird with Jesus out here, honestly. Two years ago, we had a man fall out of those bleachers.
Oh, yeah, they don't mean any safety.
Right onto his back, and we thought he had broke his back, but he just got the maynot out of it. But we need, we need to make a change over as well.
Injuries.
Yeah, and I have staff that, I mean, it's weird and ambiguous on new things. It makes sense for us to continue that.
You want to pay money in that facility for a long time with the consequences, time to do that, safety is a while. You have enough direction?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
We got a whole business to push through, Paul. I think we have a second claims list. Do you have any questions on that claims list or are we moving? Just that first one, again, my experience, what is U M B? It's a big number.
U M B Bank, very popular.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'll notice this, so typically what happens is U M B Bank or one of the larger banks will purchase our bonds and then they will sell out smaller portions of our bonds to even local banks, so.
I just haven't seen it before.
Yeah. Out of Kansas City.
Yeah, for just short of a million dollars for that question. I'll go ahead and pull the claims list as presented.
Second. Craig here. Can most of the groups that are claims listed as presented, ready votes, other questions? All the various, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? More than carries, discussion items, website review, and interview committee. We have one volunteer from the council for that process. Two volunteers, right?
Just, no, this is just to get through the review process and pick a contractor when we get into the actual website itself, that there's enough interest from the entire council that it will be done in the whole meeting like that. This is, and really, for those of the volunteers who are going to sort of begin to their companies.
I think I may have put the book in Chris's ear about this website review some time ago, but it's basically because we need to update and keep current our website and make it more user-friendly, recognizing the graphics of what website design has come a long ways since this one was first established. And want to have the ability to make it easy to pay, whether it's water bill or Parks and Act membership or whatever it is, so we can get more computer literate comes to how you not have to deal with checks and cash and things like that.
Well, it's one of the things that we've talked about in the aftermath and the direction of being so tied to people needing to come into City Hall, we can eliminate as much of that. And we're doing that with removing the tenant program, you know, just the ability to not have that necessity when it comes to.
Or it was a real, also recently on the website, I remember, if you only need that online, so we're getting that direction. I think you talked about it some time ago about, I don't remember what context, but to be able to, people carry cash, you know.
Yes.
Write checks, they want to tap it, tap it, pay it that way.
You have a dichotomy, right? You have those that still want to do that, and you have those that will not, cannot, won't do it that way.
Yes, you know, we are still going to continue to have individuals who are in their walk of ability.
Absolutely.
Physically sliding that, no, because I like to see that somebody has taken it and that it's been, but yes, there are a number of other individuals, especially those that work out of town, that would certainly want to either get online or call and do it that way.
So, Chris, I was just going to say, as a follow-up to the signage committee, your the discussion that we had, and we need to consider the product, the whole brand and the website being part of that too. No, just consider it out.
Yes. I can't say anymore.
Yeah.
I have some thoughts on that as well.
First of all, on this website, again, I'm friends with Chris, but the ability to have an easy opportunity for the mayor, for the cabinet, something about what's happened this month.
for the common, something about what's happening this month, I was cautioned that that is probably on a quarterly basis. Chris and I pick up advice well, that's probably my answer to this. But to be able to get access to without, to easily put in an update on what's happening, what's coming up, what's settled, just to have that out there, can't read that extra piece. So I'd have to commit to that. So thanks for the work, put the process there, the process together, whatever. And I think we're down to our two bidders, so keep the process going. Is there anything else you need on this?
Yes.
No, nothing else.
No, nothing more, okay.
Sorry. Yes, that's all I need.
I think I know what that's about. Reports, who wants to start? Start this whole this weekend. I mentioned that I spent a couple hours on Saturday at City Hall. I was probably busy two hours, there were people standing there for the first two hours, dozen people. Interesting questions about the scoby road and handling of this size truck. Having the truck there was a bit visual, thank you for the picture in favor of Nathan. Having which way to turn or to face the bins and how hard it's hard to have them. You know, those arrows on the bins, what are the bins coming and what do we do with our old blue bins? I mean, they're answering all of those. I think I offered one suggestion to Chris for handling glass on a work spot, a work site on the Grand Road. I'm not sure if they're there yet, but there, there's at least one more item that I don't think is settled there. There may be more as we get into the rollout here by the end of June. The Fourth of July being Monday, I don't know if that effectively makes the starting date this, the fifth, not Tuesday. But the next communication piece will be the flyers that get included in the handles of the bins for the drop off of their houses that last week of June. I'm glad Republic was more than grateful, they had a representative there, they had a truck there, two drivers there. There was, they didn't make it to be there on the Saturday morning that I was pressed by.
So Tom, is the flyer that happens the last week of June also going to address taking back the bins that people have now?
I would see, I would see.
I've had that question asked.
So as far as the recycling bins are concerned, they are recyclable materials. So if they no longer have any use for them, they can actually put them in their recycling containers.
Okay.
Uh, and those can be picked up. If there is a desire or a need, we could try and house a kind of a take back the recycling container day and housing and Republic would take them and recycle that for us if we would like. Your garbage cans however are not made of recyclable materials. But again, for those that have a sixty-five or ninety-six, whatever, and want to throw them directly in their garbage, they're free to do that. And they can be disposed of with their service to be the garbage, so. So those are the two, and I, you talking about glass, I did make contact with Ripple, Ripple Glass too, they class recycle. They have not contacted me back yet, but I left two messages. They're based in New Orleans, so.
Republic has a relationship with a recycling permit cleansing that will take the blue bins and nothing else. So I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but kind of collection point, parking lot of sewage pool, I may it be a good idea, that may be a bad idea. But there's, there is an option to that for discussion. And the information, I don't think, I think Matt's gonna give you what's gonna be on that information piece that gets in the handles of the bins. But that would have maps and days. On the biggest change that I thought I heard was, instead of the north side, south side, it's gonna be more east side, west side.
It'll be, uh, the last day of proposal was a three day process. So there are two quadrants that have a majority, more housing units that would have to be picked up. So what's interesting about how Republic is going to do this is they will pick up garbage first. They will take that to Moon County Salway's dump and then come back and pick up recycling with the same truck. And then when the truck is done for the day, it goes back to the recycling center with it. So garbage materials have to stay or required to go to Moon County Siderac Salway's, recycling materials are not. So that's how they're going to see new handles with one truck. The other good part of that is if that truck happens to go down, they have others in their fleet that are similarly capable of doing that. So there shouldn't be any significant disruptions, so.
And a third party will be distributing the bins that last week of July. The communication piece that's gonna be in the handles is gonna be key to hang on to. So you know your day, your times, what to recycle, what to recycle, a whole theme about recycling clean. But that's the next educational piece to this process. And so major system change and being patient with it. And not only for residential, you know, it's fourteen hundred fifty whatever is residential, but also for our commercial customers as well, so. Do I talk about, oh, about your C D G? I mean.
I have two more questions. Sure, here's a high five. Somebody say it.
Yes.
So a group of six of us went to Richmond, Virginia, to the National Community Street Conference to receive one of the top eight awards on behalf of the community. So three communities were awarded the Great American Main Street Award. We were in that second tier. So it is still a great honor to be even in the second tier. And when you see a demonstration from the communities that won, it is very evident why they won. So we'll try, try again.
Hopefully we'll learn from that.
Yeah, yeah, and it was very interesting because the day after the awards were announced, each of the three winning communities kind of gave their own reflections in a seminar format of what process they went through, how they determined, how they wrote the grant itself. Because it's quite an extensive, um, piece that you have to write and do demonstration on. One thing that is very evident that can really, really benefit us as a total community, not just C D G, but as a community, is that focus on diversity, inclusion and equity. Right, so being conscious in everything that we do, whether it's picking garbage, whether it's meeting people on the street, whether it's planning on events, whether it's designing our concession stand. How do we incorporate that thinking into what we do? Evidently in our presentation, the way that we were able to answer it wasn't as strong as what I believe they would like to see. So we need to improve as an organization much more thoughtful in that area. Now, absent all of that, there was a list of about five thousand really, really cool things that we'd like to do. Right, so I mean, this, this is a thought provoking seminar, a thought provoking three days of the best of the best within the whole country and encouraging you to think about doing things differently and bringing those ideas home and putting them into action. So the new board, which will take their positions July one, of which Lisa White is the new president, will go through that list of five thousand things, right? I really told the exaggerate, but, and narrow it down to things that we can be successful at.
Did you for a warning too when you applied for a training and a hat for this award? But it's very rare that the first time some medals win, so.
So it wasn't a bad thing?
No, it was not, and I, I do believe based upon my conversations with Joe, he's got his own this. So, yeah, I, you know, I think the hardest part has been just.
He was definitely.
Talking to Joe about the fact that.
Oh, sorry.
He was there was a huge thing. He obviously wanted to win it. All of us kind of wanted to, to be able to go in the park. That eight was a huge.
So there were three in the top tier and an eighth in the second?
No, no.
Three and five.
Three, three and five.
So, all right, I mean, come on, you know.
Across the. Yeah, it is, it is incredible. And again, if you listen to the stories that won the awards, they should be publicly posted where you can see them. It is truly incredible. So one of the winners had a trash incinerator in the middle of their downtown that their thoughtful city leaders thought was a really good use of funds to put a trash incinerator in their historic downtown. And theirs was transforming their community from a middle town with a trash incinerator to someplace really cool, right? They were a first year award winner. The other two communities were, they had applied multiple times. And they had, they had good stories too. I would say that Lardy Wyoming was a story that was much like ours, if you go out and watch.
But Lardy is probably ten times larger than me.
Not really, they're pretty small.
They're Lardy?
But they're not as small as Nupurna, but they're pretty small.
They're not. Also, I'm just sure Wyoming is extremely large and crafty, so.
Careful now. I have a cowboy that lives in my house. Yeah, so anyway, it was a great amount of fun. It was really energizing. I know Steph's been to one of those before as well.
That's a great event. It's a great event.
Yep.
Thanks for attending, thanks for the warning, thanks for coaching us up hopefully for next year too. I thought that was significant to get the email that I think Chris shared, follows from Debbie Durk from Iowa. You got the development, I think on the governor's office, their recognition of Bob Burns.
Right, so to put some context around that, the state of Iowa can only support one applicant for the GANSA award. And they chose to support Nupurna.
I did hope.
So there were other communities that were ready or wanted to be ready to apply, but only that letter of support came to Nupurna.
So pretty cool.
Yes. Any other reports, any council members, the administrative report, it's not yours, Chris?
No, I think you have this back, I think.
Lot of calendar things, um, Clock Park opening, Thursday's issue now.
End of July.
Science, I don't remember what the next science meeting is, but there's also a full meeting, I think, I forget what time it is.
Thursday's still.
And then you're the one that you just announced about the Stolberg Park, about a lot of calendar things. Before we go to closed sessions, is there anything else that we need to talk about to marry the power in open session? If not, I will, I will be out of this meeting. I think I need a motion to go into closed session here. All right, let's close the first meeting first. We're ready to vote on closing meeting, all the fair motions say aye.
Aye.
Close, seven thirty-three, we close the open meeting and back in two minutes.